Okay, we'll get started. We're gonna start with Councilman, ask Councilman Greenwell if he can lead us in the invocation and Councilwoman Salier if you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for all the many blessings you bestowed upon us in this great city. We ask for guidance and understanding as we go through today's budget program. Give us an understanding and wisdom to help shape the city and reach out to benefit as many people as possible. We ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order, recess the council meeting and convene as the Finance Committee.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we have three presentations this morning with airports, parks and the Development Services. And then after that, we'd anticipated adjourning the Finance Committee, come back in and pass a resolution introducing the budget, answer any broader questions the council may have on the budget. And so with that, we can start with Mark Krannenberg, our airports director.
Thank you. Good morning, Mark Krannenberg, airports director. And this is the airports department 2015 fiscal year proposed budget, which can be found on page seventy-nine in your budget book. The mission of the airports department is to provide for the operations and management and development of the city's three airports to our tenants and our users and the general public so that they can have a safe and efficient air transportation system. The airports department operates three airports on behalf of the Oklahoma City Airport Trust and the city of Oklahoma City. We manage Will Rogers World Airport, which is the commercial service airport that serves over 3.6 million passengers a year on six different airlines. We average about seventy-five daily flights and as of July second, to twenty-two non-stop destinations. We also provide facilities for general aviation aircraft at Wiley Post and Clarence E. Page Airport. We manage a robust capital improvement program for maintenance and construction of buildings and infrastructure, and we also manage over four hundred and fifty leases, contracts and various agreements. I'd like to take you through an overview of the airport trust budget, which was approved last month. Start off with airport charges to our tenants and our users. Building rents are comprised of lease payments for the terminal building and also other buildings and hangars at the three airports. Our landing fees are comprised of a rate calculated per one thousand pounds of landed weight, and this is charged to the air carriers and also the freight carriers. We also have parking revenues, which are derived from revenues from our parking garages and the various service lots, as well as concession revenues, that's from the food and beverage and retail and the rental car concession operations. We also receive fuel sales in the way of fuel flowage fees. This is a rate calculated on a per gallon basis for all fuel that is either retailed on the airport or that is self-fueled by those operators at the airport that have self-fueling privileges. And we have a significant amount of other charges, which is comprised of maintenance reimbursements from tenants associated with their leases, apron fees and ground rentals on all three of our airports. So total airport charges of fifty-one million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. We also have other sources of revenue.
Mark, can I ask a quick question? I'm just curious about landing fees. Are they consistent around the country? Are they competitive? How do we?
They are consistent throughout the country for a commercial service airport, and they're calculated, as I said, on one thousand pounds of landed weight. Our current rate is two dollars and eighty-four cents per one thousand pounds, and it's based on a cost recovery model based on operations and maintenance for the airfield itself, and that's paid by the airlines.
Okay, would that be a different rate at JFK?
Depending on how much money they put into their airfield with operations and maintenance, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you.
We also have other sources of revenue as well, oil and gas royalties. We have interest on investments, and we also have passenger facility charges, which helps fund our capital program. Customer facility charges are helping to construct the new rental car facility and purchase the buses for that operation, and we're anticipating a significant amount of federal and state participation in the form of grants from the Federal Aviation Administration through their airport improvement program, where we get assistance to fund our airfield projects on our airports, as well as to purchase certain types of equipment. We are also anticipating a small amount of money from the Transportation Security Administration from a reimbursable agreement associated with our checked baggage system. So the total other revenue is thirty million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. We also have carryover, which is the Mike Mironi Aeronautical Center's escrow account, and then we have also in our project fund, funds from the prior year that we will be using on our capital program of thirty-six million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We're projecting thirty million, eight, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for revenue bond proceeds, and this is for the amount of dollars that we intend to spend on construction. Total sources of funds for the budget for fiscal year 2015 is a hundred and forty-eight million, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And looking at the use--
You mentioned construction programs, and you mentioned a little earlier the building of a new rental car facility. Will that result in any increased fees for the citizens?
No, right now, we're charging a four dollar and fifty cent customer facility charge. It's on a transaction day basis, and we have been charging that since July, I think, of 2013.
And we will continue at that same level?
We anticipate keeping that same level.
Thank you.
And looking at the uses of funds, our operating expenditures, other services and fees, this includes our major contracts, such as our parking management contract, our aircraft rescue and firefighting contract, as well as janitorial and supplemental security contracts. We have commodities, which represents other services and materials. Our debt requirements are basically to pay back the financing on previous construction projects, such as the last terminal renovation and also the most recent five-story parking garage and the rental car bonds that were issued last year. The transfer to the airports cash fund, sixteen million, nine hundred and nine thousand dollars, that's representative of airport salaries and benefits and other miscellaneous services and supplies. We also are budgeting, excuse me, the operating expenditures then come to a total of fifty-six million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. We're also anticipating reserves of three million, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars. This will be funds that we'll receive in the next fiscal year that will be used on future capital, and then a significant capital outlay this next year of eighty-nine million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars balances the budget. Our first issue relates to areas that can impact resources for funding operations and capital. For instance, if we have a dip in our passenger growth, such as what happened after nine-eleven and most recently in the recession a few years ago, then that can have a negative impact on some airline-related revenue categories, such as concession revenue, our parking revenues and also our passenger facility charges. We are always looking at our facility demands, and that's one reason that we're pushing forward with the terminal renovation that I'll talk about later. And we still have some leases that lag current market rates. And if we don't address these effectively, then we could have a decrease in the quality of services to our tenants and our citizens and also result in deferred maintenance and a lack of funding. So our strategy is to increase and stabilize airport revenue. One way we do that is to ensure that all of our leases are at market rate. When you talk about market rate for ground rent for aviation use, that's we benchmark other airports, and for non-aviation ground rent, we have to use fair market value, and all of our facilities periodically undergo appraisals. We also have cost recovery rates if the airport is to provide infrastructure for development, such as if we put in water or wastewater utilities, and that's based on a model to recover that infrastructure over a period of time. And we also maintain a food, beverage and retail concession revenue growth of at least two percent a year. Our second issue deals with areas that we have to react to efficiently. I've already talked about how the number of aircraft operations and passenger boardings can affect the airport revenue, but we also have aviation business activity that we monitor, and of course, we're working hard to try to get development started on the airports' east side, where we're planning to develop a thousand acres, more or less, of mixed-use aeronautical and non-aeronautical uses. And so this has a tremendous impact on funding and even staff resources. We also have a number of safety, security, environmental requirements that sometime come down in the form of unfunded mandates. A couple of good examples of this was last summer when the government sequestration efforts were going on and we were under the threat of possibly the air traffic control tower at Wiley Post closing. And most recently, we had the issue with the Transportation Security Administration trying to shift responsibility for them manning the exit lanes at commercial service airports to an airport function. So if we don't deal with these, then it certainly will have an impact on staffing and workload and our funding requirements for future capital, as well as planning and ultimately customer satisfaction. So we want to improve the airport environment for the public and our tenants. One of the ways we're doing that is to complete the implementation plan that was identified in the parking study a few years ago. One of the things that we're doing, left on that project, is to improve all of the signage in the garage. The new rental car facility will be constructed, and that is scheduled to be complete in summer of 2015. And as far as the central terminal improvements and the update to the terminal expansion, we'll be addressing those two issues in our terminal expansion project. The twenty-year growth of Oklahoma City's population and especially the business activity has resulted in an increased demand for air service. If we don't address this effectively, then the airport trust could have missed revenue opportunities and the city could have missed economic development, tourism and convention business opportunities, as well as ultimately customer dissatisfaction with our citizens. So we want to continue to attract air service. We've done a good job over the years of doing that. One way to do that is to limit the growth of the cost to the airlines per boarding passenger than more than five percent a year. I'll talk a little bit about that later. We also want to accomplish a minimum of three marketing presentations to airlines each year. When we do a presentation, we spend about half the time on the presentation talking about the airport and our low-cost structure, and then the other half about the community. That's what the airlines really want to know, what's going on in Oklahoma City? Who are the businesses here? Who do they have relationships and where are they flying to? We also want to try to achieve a two percent or greater increase in boarding passenger numbers each year. Our fourth issue is the amount of land available that we have for the airport, and we're fortunate that we do have a significant amount of land at all three of our airports. We also have a few facilities that are vacant, and we always have the cost of maintaining our existing infrastructure. Excuse me, in fact, at Wiley Post and Will Rogers World Airport, we have a study right now to evaluate the complete drainage systems at those airports. So if we don't deal with this, then it could prevent the trust from generating sustainable revenue sources to continue to fund our operations and capital. We're already incurring some additional costs as far as security for some of our vacant facilities, and if we don't use our land efficiently, it could prevent the city from receiving the benefits of economic development opportunities. So we want to continue our land development strategy with regard to Lariat Landing, which is the airports' east side. We're in the final review of that project and comments on the Village at Lariat Landing, which is the retail portion of that. We want to try to make sure our leases, our vacant buildings are ready to lease, and we want to continue to maintain and improve our existing infrastructure. Excuse me, go back one more time. Some of the ways we're gonna do that, Portland Avenue, that's a project that's underway right now, I'll talk a little bit about. We also have our public parking spaces that'll increase by five percent or four hundred spaces. That's directly related to the rental car facility being constructed. And we also have thirty percent of our developable acres will be leased primarily related to the east side. And we're also, through inspection reports, gonna monitor our infrastructure and identify funding sources for replacement. Air service has always been a top priority for us, and we've done a good job, as I said. We had a few achievements this year. On July second, US Airways will begin service to Charlotte, North Carolina. We will also have, and we have had service on Allegiant from November of last year to Orlando Sanford. Then we want to continue our efforts to secure non-stops to Ronald Reagan, New York's La Guardia and the Pacific Northwest. Our passenger boardings have been pretty steady. In fiscal year 2013, we had a little over one million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand passenger boardings. We're anticipating that going up about one percent in fiscal year 2014, and in 2015, next year, we're hoping to be about one point nine million boarding passengers. Our cost per plane passenger, as I mentioned, has been very low. Will Rogers is five dollars and sixty-eight cents. The median for an airport of our size is seven dollars and forty-four cents, so we feel like we're doing very well there. Moving to our lines of business, our commercial aviation line of business has three programs. We track the percentage of airport certification categories that have no corrective actions. We strive for a hundred percent. We just had our inspection a couple of weeks ago at ninety-two percent. We also track the percentage of days with zero security incidents. Our target is ninety-seven percent. We're at ninety-three percent. Couple of examples of security violations would be doors left open to passenger loading bridges or baggage makeup area, or also gates probably to the airport operating area. Our general aviation line of business has two programs. We also have a similar inspection measure for general aviation airports, ninety percent target, and we've averaged eighty-eight percent the last three years. We also track the percentage of days that the airport is closed. We've done pretty good there. Our target is eight percent, and we're at seven percent. An example would be maintenance, construction or making aircraft incident, could close a runway. We have four programs in our maintenance line of business. We track the percentage of operating hours where mechanical systems are functioning. Our target is ninety-five percent. We're doing pretty well at ninety-six percent. This would be baggage loading bridges, jet loading bridges, baggage systems, our HBA systems, elevators, escalators, et cetera. We also have the percentage of vehicles and equipment available for use, and we're doing quite well there, above our target at ninety-nine percent. In the property management and development line of business, we have three programs, and we're doing really well here the last few years, where we track the percentage of total construction costs as a result of change orders and amendments. We're at five percent, our target. I mentioned the realignment of Portland Avenue. This is a project that's been going on for some months now. The south portion is under construction from southwest one hundred and fourth street to seventy-fourth street, and we anticipate the north portion being bid out after the first of the year. Our terminal expansion project, we're very excited about. We're budgeting about eight million dollars next year for A and E and related services. This is the project where we'll be extending the east terminal by three bays and also designing an ultimate nine-gate concourse to mirror the west concourse that we have today. First phase of that project will be to do the three-bay expansion at a three-gate concourse. The remaining six gates will be based on future demand. And of course, the goals are to increase airline gate capacity, as well as improve airport functions and passenger processing. And again, this project hopefully will be done in about three years. I mentioned the consolidated rental car facility that's underway. This is a picture from the south end of the project looking north. You see Meridian on the right. It's about a forty-acre site, and again, that will be complete the summer of 2015. Our checked baggage inspection system is well underway. About a third of the old inline system has been demolished. This is replacing the single feed system that we had with a more redundant system, and this will result in better screening and enhanced security. Our cash fund budget proposed is sixteen million, nine hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and one dollars. You can see it broken out by our lines of business, and we have currently a hundred and eighteen positions which are assigned, and we're not asking for any new positions this next year. We do have some slight increases in our insurance benefits and salaries of fifty thousand dollars, and city-provided services, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. And we have a decrease in that overall budget from last year of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars based on some utility account processing from the cash fund to the trust And my voice is out, and so I can, I think, last for some questions. Thank you.
Mark, just a couple of questions. On some of your airport issues, you refer to decreased customer service. How serious is that concern?
It's important to us because we have so many areas of the airport that we're not directly related to the customer. The airline ticket counter, if someone has a bad experience there, we care about that. If their bags get lost and TSA has an issue with bags, we often hear from those people as well. So from our side on the customer service issue, what really we're wanting to do is to continue to maintain a great facility like we feel like we've had ever since the last terminal renovation, and we want to continue to improve air service. That's what we want to do. That's our main goal, and also to provide a safe operating environment in the terminal and also on the airfield.
So how likely would a customer out there be? How likely would they see a decreased service?
Well, we believe--
Is that a concern of yours? Is it a concern? It's very likely to happen or, you know, very remote?
We think the customer satisfaction is really high right now, but we're cognizant that that could be decreased if some of these issues were to occur. On the business side, if we don't have the land available and we have interest in developing the land, then that hurts customer service. If we don't maintain our systems for our tenants and our users in the building, that hurts customer service. So we're just cognizant of that.
A second question, this is sort of a what-if question. Do you have a lot of passengers at the airport, passengers who are changing planes and have to wait a long time?
We have less probably than five percent of our passengers that connect to other flights who are in origination and destination airports. So our typical dwell time in the terminal for people departing is probably twenty minutes to forty minutes.
Not long enough, for instance, to hire a bus, take them to the Lariat shopping area, retail center?
No, I don't believe that would be practical at this time.
Thank you.
And a related question to that would be in terms of dining options. You know, we're fairly limited in what we have out there in fast food. Most airports I travel to these days have at least one, you know, kind of sit-down, more full-service dining option.
You're right. On the pre-security side, we have had challenges from the space standpoint, and that's one reason why we've tried different models on the pre-security concession to make that work. We've even had some tables and chairs out there at one time, but sometimes that hasn't proved to be effective. On the inside, inside the concourse, we're working with Delaware North Companies, and they've been very proactive in bringing to us concepts, and they are planning to do some other things in the lounge area. So we're looking forward to those kind of concepts, but--
Yeah, I mean, if we're not a place that people are spending a ton of time, you know, I understand how that makes a difference, but--
Right.
--if you do get stuck, you know, something a little bit more than--
But because of the fact that there are a lot of transfers, you know, people aren't, generally don't come out and say, you know, I think I'm gonna go to the airport now earlier so I can dine at Chili's out there. That's generally not the--
Right.
I'd like to park, have you pass along to the parking people, something that I observed week before last. On a positive note, I was on a plane coming in from Las Vegas that didn't arrive till after 1:00 AM with a hundred and forty-three passengers on it, and as I got my car and got in line, there was only one parking exit open, and I thought, oh, man, this is gonna stack up. But they responded in the middle of the night and opened another one up just like that and got those cars out. And I thought, what a good response and flexibility to keep the customer happy, because even though we didn't have direct control over it, we'd have probably gotten a black eye if people had sat out there for fifteen, twenty minutes waiting to get out of the parking garage. So if you pass that along to the folks, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the comment.
Just had a question about, have we, we were gonna purchase eight buses to transfer to the rental car facility? Have we purchased those yet? Is it, are there legal or logistical impediments to running a transit line from the airport to downtown?
Well, a transit line could be run from the airport to downtown--
From the airport trust?
No.
The airport trust running a line with its personnel, its buses?
I don't think we could do it from an airport trust standpoint. I don't think that the trust would be able to fund those type of operations. Those are, airport operations are restricted to the operations of the airport and airport capital. And the buses you mentioned on the rental car facility, that's gonna be a direct, because the, that's being paid for by the customers who just use the rental car facility. That's dedicated just from this facility to the terminal.
But there's a legal impediment that the funds for the airport trust have to be spent on the grounds? You can't spend it outside?
Yes, it's restricted to the, just strictly the operations of the airport or its capital, and that's for all three airports.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Thanks, Mark.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next up is the Parks Department. Doug Cupper is here this morning. So be easy on him. He may not have all the answers at this point.
Good morning, Vice Mayor of City Council, Doug Cupper, Director of Your Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks budget can be found on page two seventy-five, and I'd like to thank my staff members, Terry Ash, the Acting Assistant Director, and Carrie Snell, our Acting Business Manager, for helping prepare this document for you today. Our mission is to provide for the quality of life of our residents in Oklahoma City. It is our endeavor to provide a great park system, clean and efficient recreational facilities and outstanding cultural arts services, again, to improve the quality of life for our citizens across Oklahoma City. We have five business centers, basically within the Parks and Recreation Department. There's the Administration Section, Civic Center, Music Hall, the Recreation Division, Horticulture and Gardens, and then obviously the Grounds Maintenance Section. Within Administration, we have the Park Planning and Landscape Architects. These folks are the ones that review all of the plans, whether they're outside consultants that are doing designs for new parks. But we also do some in-house, our smaller projects are done in-house by our trained landscape architects. We also provide a service to the Public Works Department in reviewing some of their roadway systems and the landscaping that might go into those type of circumstances. We, the Landscape Architects, also provide services for grounds rehabilitation, such as around City Hall in the near future. Our Central Business Office handles the permitting of special events and picnic shelter rentals and building rentals. We're expected to go over twenty-four hundred permits for this upcoming year. We also provide support for six commissions that you all appoint, and obviously, that's the Park Commission, the Golf Commission, the Oklahoma City River Redevelopment, the Civic Center Foundation Game and Fish Commission, as well as the Trails Advisory Commission. The marketing staff has to provide advertising for our recreation programs, our urban fisheries programs, our athletics, and let alone the special events that we put on through the Parks and Recreation Department. In the budget this year, we are looking to add a position into the marketing organization to help our Civic Center do a better job of getting the word out about all the wonderful activities that go on from the culture and the performing arts side of things. Which leads us into the Civic Center's activities. Obviously, our box office is the biggest activity that we do over there. We sold over three hundred thousand tickets last year. We are forecasting that we will go over three hundred and thirty thousand tickets for our activities in the Civic Center this year. And the rental of that facility generates quite a bit of activities. We had over a hundred and sixty-eight private rentals at the facility this past year. And of course, having the Rose State Performing Arts Theater out there at the university adds quite an element of expectations to the offerings that we have. It might actually translate into some more activities for our own downtown center as well. So we're looking forward to trying to capitalize on that relationship for the, with the Rose Center as well. Our Recreation Division, that's the Fun and Games section of the department. We have an aqua, we have quite a few aquatics or water activities. We have the two family aquatic centers, seventeen spray grounds and three other swimming pools. Our aquatics is forecasting that we will have a hundred and fifteen thousand people participate in our family aquatic centers. But where we really help the citizens stay cool and keep the kids refreshed is at our seventeen spray grounds, and we had over half of our citizens participate in a spray ground of one shape or another this past year. So we're hoping to up that, and we'd like to make sure that as the heat-- So we're hoping to up that, and we'd like to make sure that as the heat rises, our swimming areas and our spray places stay cool and facilitate proper recreation. The Recreation Division also runs 11 rec. centers where we offer a wide variety of programming, especially in the summertime, to keep the kids active and engaged. It's an opportunity, really, the more we can keep our children doing something in the summer, hopefully in some activities outdoors, they're more mentally challenged, they're more mentally healthy, and it also helps reduce our juvenile crimes and things along those lines. So we actually are a good quality public safety element as well as a healthy element for young citizens. We also provide two senior centers, again, diversified programming for the seniors and things along those lines. And of course, we offer recreational opportunities out at our three main lakes as well, boating and things along those lines. The Recreation Division also oversees management of the contractors that run the tennis centers, and we have some wonderful tennis facilities here in Oklahoma City. Our Athletic Divisions also help with programming or setting up leagues for the 123 athletic fields that we have, obviously with the addition out there at Woodson. Our Horticulture and Gardens Division, kind of, that's the beautifiers of our great city. They, one of the things I'll have to get used to, I diverge, is taking care of the canal. This is my first endeavor in taking care of canals, but I'm sure that the Horticulture crew does a wonderful job down there. I've walked it a number of times already since I've been down here. That land-run monument, absolutely gorgeous. I'm so proud to be a part of that whole endeavor, making it a unique space for our visitors that come to the downtown area. Obviously, Will Rogers Gardens with the Rose Gardens and the Iris Gardens and the Lykan Conservatory that was just rehabilitated. It's a wonderful facility. I was at a meeting out there yesterday. I look forward to a lot of opportunities for additional programming in that space. One of the changes for this year is we've moved the hatchery systems, the fish hatcheries, out of the Recreation Division and into the Horticulture and Gardens Section. It aligns the sciences better, and they're better suited with each other. The hatchery produced over 700,000 fish for our urban anglers, and we look forward to providing those kind of activities for the next go-around. Obviously, the best kept secret that we want to advertise is the close-to-home fishing that we have across the great city of Oklahoma City. Grounds Management is one of the larger divisions that we have, trying to take care of over 149 parks. The equivalent, if you were to look at how much grass we mow, is over 50,000 acres annually. So a lot of people don't understand when they're just pushing the mower on their quarter-acre home plot that what it takes to actually take care of a city this size. We provide, the Grounds Maintenance provides the support services for the Athletics Division within Recreation to provide quality, clean, and safe athletic fields. And of course, we are very involved with the Oklahoma River through the downtown area and elsewhere. And we also participate with the Public Works Department in hazardous responses, weather-related catastrophes or anything that comes along, that additional resources are needed to keep the city functioning and open and going forward. I'd like to talk about leading for results. Across the nation, the last decade, leisure services, leisure trends have changed as more and more of the baby boomers are retiring. The type of offerings that our senior centers have had to stay up, it's no longer Domino's and Bingo and Bridge that attracts most of our baby boomers. We're talking about rock climbing and mountain biking and whitewater rafting, let alone 60, 70, 80-year-olds still out on our river rowing. So we have to be able to adapt and change to that demographic change. We also have a change in ethnicity across the great city. So we have to understand that when we have children coming to our rec. centers, that the old traditional bumper pool and ping-pong might not be that attractive for them. We have to be up and we have to be ready. We have to look at that. But even with all of those challenges, we've maintained a pretty good satisfaction rate from our customers, and we want to improve upon that. In 2013, our actuals were 55% were satisfied with the programming that we're offering. We want to get above that. I'd like to get 70% before we get too far into this decade. Our public expectations from cleanliness and citizens expecting more from us, expecting clean, obviously, we can't provide for quality of life if our maintenance is falling down, our programming isn't up to standards. One of the things that we need to do a better job, and that's improve our marketing, get people out to our activities, get them to our events, get them to our aquatics facilities. The more we can get people out there, the more we can survey them, to find out how we're doing, what kind of job we're doing, what we're lacking in amenities and things along those lines. We want to make sure that we are talking to our citizens and, but getting them out to our facilities. Again, we had a good success rate. We want to capitalize on that and improve upon that going forward. We're all stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. We want to make sure that we're doing a quality job from that perspective. We want to design new parks or renovate older parks into more efficient operating facilities. We want to look at how our HVAC systems are working in our centers to make sure that we're using them, getting the most out of our dollars, our taxpayers' dollars, in operating these facilities. We want to make sure that our turf grass species are of the type that can withstand the droughts that we have during the summer months. We want to make sure that we are addressing the weeds and the sand spurs and things along those lines in an efficient manner, but also, again, improving the quality of the park experience. If, you know, if it looks pretty, but by the time you walk across the park, your socks and pant legs are covered with sand spurs, it's not a good experience. We want to make sure that we take care of that. But the big thing is efficient design of new aspects of parks. The picture that you have here is the Route 66 Park, and you can see all the diverse activities that are involved in this park design. So when a family unit comes out to a park, there's something for everybody to participate in. Because again, the toddlers are not going to get in the skate park, but you've got to have those elements for their older siblings to participate in. Capital improvement projects, our projects that's listed here is Woodson. This is the renovations of the soccer complex. I know that you've heard from the CVB about athletic endeavors in our great city. This new improvements at Woodson Park will help us take that next step towards some great tournament experiences, again, adding to the economic vitality of this community. It's important to stay ahead of those types. And again, the turf species and things along those lines that have been designed into this cornerstone park is going to be important for its viability and its efficient operations. And some of our feature projects that we've recently completed, the conservatory out at Will Rogers, again, wonderful facility. I think we're going to see a much improved activities at that site. People are going to want to have their weddings at Will Rogers even more than they have in the past. A lot of great outdoor facilities, but you'd need to have that indoor as well. Kitchen Lake, the dedication that I hope you all can attend next week on June 10th. Again, a wonderful opportunity to get our citizens out to the water, access to the water. We are making it handicap accessible so that people that are in wheelchairs or children that are in wheelchairs can be taken out to the water and participate in one of the life skills, and that's our fishing programs and things along those lines. Again, the total cost of that, to get people access to this great body of water, was nearly three-quarters of a million dollars. Parks are a sense of place, and the improvements that we did at Martin Park Nature Center with the new entry features and things along those lines gives you a sense of place, gives you the opportunity that you are being welcomed to a great facility. I think this was a great addition to this park, and the funds were, came from general obligation bonds. It's a wonderful facility. The only way we can survive as a city, as a Parks and Recreation Department, is developing close partnerships. And the staff that preceded me, Wendell, and all the folks that have been here for a number of years have done a great job of creating those partnerships. We've got over 50 community organizations that do different things at different times across the great city. Again, it helps us be able to stretch the taxpayers' dollars into activities that need to be done, that need to be focused on. But we also need to develop new partnerships going forward, people that can offer those diverse recreational opportunities to all of our citizens, from the baby boomers down to the newborns that are coming into our systems in the near future. So we need to continue to develop those programs. We've got over 74 landscape partnerships across the city. Rose Park volunteers are shown here. Neighborhood associations, and now welcome to go out to your wards and talk to your neighborhood associations. I love the invitation that I've already received from the Vice Mayor to come out and visit with his neighborhood association. I want to get out there. I want to visit with your folks so that I can add to this page in subsequent budgets going forward. That's where our bread and butter is. That's where we need to get out. We need to talk to our neighbors. The proposed budget, again, as Woodson comes online, the opportunities for us to program at that site, to offer athletic leagues and tournaments and things along those lines, have required us to request that personnel be added to the Recreation Division so that we can offer those programs. Additional resources are being added to the Grounds Maintenance to properly care for those soccer, the soccer and baseball fields out there. We want to make sure that we continue to be ADA compliant, that all, again, all of our citizens can come out and enjoy the parks. The, as I mentioned before, the marketing coordinator's position that we've asked for in this budget will not only help us advertise the existing programs that we have in the Parks and Recreation side of things, but also to focus quite a bit of attention on the Civic Center and what we do there and the offerings that we have there so that we can improve upon our numbers of satisfaction and participants at the Civic Center. The nursery workers, kind of a wash, but it's a new position that we needed to maintain the five acres or 225,000 square feet of flower beds across the city. The James Stewart Golf Subsidy, that is a, has been a general fund obligation for a few years that was not specifically identified in the Parks and Recreation budget. We think it's logical to identify that and place it into the budget so that it is transparent and it's there for everybody to understand and know about. I will hope that under my tenure, we will not have to use this in the future. I want to work with the golfers, the golf pros and the Golf Commission, try to figure out how we can improve the playmanship and the participation at this particular golf courses and all the golf courses going forward. The lifeguards is kind of one of those things that we've paid overtime. We've had part-timers that really work more than part-time hours, and with the Affordable Care Act coming online and things along those lines, we had to make some changes. So we've asked for the two lifeguards to be added. Again, this is more in service for our indoor facility. These folks help us keep our year-round aquatics going, but they also participate in training new lifeguards so that we have a core group to be able to hire for summer activities. And again, our Civic Center is producing so many programs that the, again, it's similar as the lifeguards. We're working part-timers more than really what part-timers needed, so we needed to identify these as two new full-time positions. The proposed operating budget for fiscal year '15 is $27,46,000. See the breakdown of the five divisions there. The total proposed budget is $32,773,000. We are asking that nine positions be added to bring the staffing levels from 188 full-time staff to 197 full-time staff. We have 75% of our citizens participating in our Parks and Recreation activities now. That's a pretty good number. We want to, we want to see every citizen participating in some kind of park or recreational activity going forward. That's our goal. Again, the better we can provide for that, the better the quality of life for our citizens. And I'd like to thank you for your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And if I can't answer it, I have staff here available that might help me out.
I have a question. I don't understand, on the two full-time lifeguards that you asked for, what will they do the rest of the year after the season's over?
These folks work at the indoor facility, and they will be staffed at that indoor facility, so they will work year-round at that indoor facility.
And the two full-time theater, what do they do?
This is, these, with us managing both sections, the Civic Center and then the Rose Theater, those technicians do work at the Civic Center here, and they do work out at the Rose. Again, they were, they were part-time positions that needed to evolve into full-time because the workload is significant for those trained technicians, those union trade technicians need to work the backstage, the sound systems, and the equipment of the two theaters.
Welcome, welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Doug, again, welcome.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you. And especially with respect to Kitchen Lake, I think that's going to be a great addition, and hopefully I can attend the opening next week. Where is the closest place to obtain a fishing permit? Will there be a facility there onsite, or will they have to go to, say, Draper Lake to obtain a?
They will have to go to one of the bigger facilities. We won't have staff at Kitchen Lake, so they'll have to go to one of the other, other larger lake systems to acquire those.
Actually, we've contracted a lot of that out, so there's a lot of private folks that have the ability to sell at different bait shops or fishing kit stores. I think in Academy, some academies, you have the ability to buy fish permits. So it's broader than that, but it's-
Okay.
Again, as big as we are, sometimes it isn't always as convenient as it could be.
That's great. Thank you.
He beat me to it. I was going to add that, too.
Any other questions? I did have one question. We just, you know, there's a lot of sadness in a couple neighborhoods around Macklinburg Park. We just filled in a swimming pool, replaced it with a spray ground, which is nice along with the other 17 spray grounds. But as Councilman White likes to say, nobody ever learned to swim in a spray park or spray ground. We were able to keep that open because Chesapeake Energy donated funds each year, and then as we lost those funds, then we converted to the spray ground. One thing I noticed in reviewing the Parks Master Plan Report was it talked about that we have much less private participation compared to our peer cities. Peer cities average about 1.2 million a year, and we're 180,000, which I'm not sure sounds right, because I'm not sure if they're excluding the Marriott Gardens. It seems like with all these partnerships you listed, that we would be at more than 180,000. But what would be the strategy or thoughts going forward with public-private partnerships, maybe to preserve the three swimming pools that we have left? maybe to preserve the three swimming pools that we have left, make our aquatic programs more robust and just, and just grow those partnerships?
Well, bringing up an interesting perspective, for the older sections of the city, our existing pools and family centers are very important. But we need to take into consideration, as the city grows and new developments grow, they usually put in their own neighborhood swimming pools and things like that. We have to be cognizant of that and, and, and count that as a resource that's available to some of our citizens going forward. Partnerships with YMCA's and, and other health providers and things along those lines are important. We're going to have to look at how they're serving, what our niche is in the aquatics world per se. But you're right, your public recreation, public aquatics is the key place for a lot of low-income and underprivileged and, and even median-income children to learn to be safe around water. With all of the bodies of water we have in Oklahoma City, the, the creeks, the rivers, the drainage areas, let alone retention ponds, it's usually the municipal recreation that provides that opportunity for those, those children to learn to be safe if they fall in the body of water, how to get out. So it's something that we need to study, but how, how is the outside world providing for those resources as well? We need to study and be ready for, but I, I think we need to maintain an aquatics present. How big that is, we'll have to study that.
It's a complex model, as Doug alluded to. You've got nonprofits like the YMCA and others that do provide some swimming activity. You, you do have the, the activities that we provide, you've got the spray grounds, you've got commercial activities that are significant at both whitewater and frontier city. And we've got the senior centers that we're putting in some aquatic features. But we did a, a aquatics master plan a few years ago and talked about the need for some additional facilities, but, but more modernized and, and different, not the square rectangles that we were having problems getting children to, more interactive, more interesting type of recreation aquatic facilities. And I would anticipate in the 2017 bond issue that we would be having a couple of, a couple of facilities plugged in there, if not, not maybe even more.
Great. Yeah.
I'm sorry, could I ask one more question? Could we go back to the Woodson Park facility, the soccer facility? And this is the first time that I've seen a rendering of it. Could you explain, are these on scale as far as the size of the fields or?
Yes, sir. Obviously, we have all ages that play the, the sport. So the little, little fields that are pretty much in the middle above the, the parking lot, those will be for the five-year-olds and things along those, much smaller scale. But if you look how they're laid out for a soccer tournament, those, those two, those two sections, the six and the four, can be made into a regulation-sized field so that adds another regulation-sized field to your offerings for, for tournaments. Obviously, the bigger fields can be then reduced to smaller depending on the age groups that, because you're not, you don't always have all of the age groups participating in a specific tournament. It might be an eight-and-under or it might be a twelve-and-under. So you want to be able to adapt the, the system to that, that circumstance. But for a city and an entry programming that our, our staffers planning, we want to capture the young people and work their way up into the bigger fields.
Well, I'm really excited about this. I drive by it every day. When's the expected completion date for this roughly?
It'll be later in the fall. We're probably going to be in the winter.
A fourteenth?
I think, yeah, I think we're trying, what Terry's alluding to is there's two soccer seasons, spring and fall. We want to try to hit the fall season.
That's great.
And so we're getting turf in now, need to get it established. The weather hasn't been real cooperative for the types of Bermuda that we're laying down. Has to be sixty-degree at, at night consistently to get it to grow. But our, our window is, we're trying to get the fall soccer season.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question in regards to the James Stewart Golf Subsidy. Can you explain that for me?
We've always had a golf subsidy for, for, for James Stewart and it ran short this year, so we've had additional money in, in the subsidy for this year's operation.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
That's what I was alluding to. We need to improve the rounds played out there, trying to come up with ideas to bring, it's the closest one to downtown, can we bring the young professionals out to play those nine holes over there and get, get more play?
Since you mentioned Woodson Park and aquatics, how about just briefly, what's the status of the pool at Woodson Park for this summer?
Good morning. I'm Terry Ash. The status of Woodson Park, or Woodson Pool is, it should be open at regular time for this season, so.
But there's a little caveat, what, what is the fee for swimming there going to be?
The fees? I'm sorry.
It's the same as it was.
Yeah, the, the fees have not changed. I can't tell you right off, but I can get that for you if you'd like.
Well, Woodson was gratis.
Yeah, I think it still is, but, but.
I thought I was throwing you all a softball, I didn't mean to confuse you, okay?
Sorry.
But.
Woodson is still free.
Yeah, which is, which is a tremendous pool down there and serves a really great part of the neighborhoods down there that needs that kind of facility. And a number of years ago, it was determined that it was more economical for us to offer free swimming than to go through and try to collect the fees and, and staff it for that. And I just wanted to get that out, that it, it is going to be open and it's going to provide.
It should be open.
Full aquatic capability and it, it is free of charge to anybody who, who uses it.
It would have been easier if you'd asked me about capital.
Okay. Sorry, thanks, Terry.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a question in regards to two swimming pools in Ward Seven, the Foster Center, the Foster Center Swimming Pool and also the Northeast Center Swimming Pool. What's the status of those or will they be open during the summertime and then what's the cost?
They're open and operating, they have not changed. The fee structure's the same, zero.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we had, we did add full-time lifeguards at, at Foster.
All right, thank you.
Next up, Development Services.
Good morning. The budget begins on page one-forty-three for the Development Services Department. We have two-hundred-and-two budgeted employees. I'd like to introduce some of my key staff. If you throw me a softball, maybe they can answer it for me. Well, I'll start. Charles Locke is Code Enforcement Superintendent, you know him, he's, he took off for a week, so he's not here. But Danny Bumpus. Danny Bumpus, Chief Building Inspector's here. Also, David Adcock took off. He's actually at training, he's a code professional and he's updating his skills. But Jane Ward is our Construction Superintendent. I'll be talking about her in this presentation. And, you know, I feel it's important that you guys see the staff that are doing, doing most of the work for me. J.J. Chambliss, Subdivision in Zoning. John Gary, he's the Acting Superintendent at Animal Welfare. And then we've got Rick Wickenkamp, my Assistant Director, and Carol Reed, the Management Specialist. And they're part of my administrative team that really kind of keep me in the right direction. But a lot of the things you're going to see today are pretty impressive in my opinion and these people are the ones that are really responsible for it. Okay, it's not going to, we came over and tested this yesterday, so. I'm going to start with Code Enforcement. Circled on the slide here, it shows that Code Enforcement is an emphasis from the city survey. We, we rank sixth and basically it shows that people are concerned about enforcement of codes and ordinances in Oklahoma City. Code Enforcement completes over a hundred thousand inspections a year. We have thirty-three field officers. Basically, they do unsecure structures, dilapidated structures, high grass, high weeds, junk and debris. As you can see from the, the bottom bullet there, we only issue about thirteen thousand citations a year. So really, it's important for our inspectors to try to work with property owners and get the problem resolved before we have to go to the citation issue. One thing that we're doing with Code Enforcement is we're transitioning from our old Hanson system to Acela. And so this summer, we're going to have our inspectors in the field with a tablet where they'll be able to get their inspections, enter the results and take a picture. Right now, they go out there with a clipboard and a camera, so it, it should really improve our efficiencies there. I want to show you this one. This is a slide about front yard parking. That's been an emphasis of council because people parking in the front yards are blight to neighborhoods and Councilman McAtee's familiar with it. For, for three years, we were averaging, through April, we averaged about three thousand a year. And then back in two thousand and thirteen, the council approved a budget that gave us five Code Enforcement Officers for weekend enforcement. And so through April of this year, we've done over eleven thousand citations for front yard parking. So that kind of shows you that the, the impact of what the council did for us a couple of years ago is. The next is the Development Center. This is our largest division. We have eighty-five budgeted positions in this one. They complete over a hundred thousand inspections a year. They did eleven thousand residential construction and remodel plans and they sell about fifty-seven thousand permits. Now, this is where we have, in my opinion, some, some pretty good news. This is a, a graph showing our construction inspections. Our goal is to complete an inspection within two days, eighty percent of the time. As you can see from the chart, back in January of eleven, we were doing about forty-five percent. We had a construction audit that identified a lot of issues that we needed to address and so we were able to take those recommendations. We had some changes in our management staff. Jane here was hired to, to manage our program really. And as of March of this year, we were at ninety-nine percent. So we're not making all our customers happy, but we're making more of them happy. So that's, this is a good, a really good indicator of how, how that really helped us.
That's really significant and it, it's a change and it's not a thing that made that happen. It's a lot of different things, but the key component is a real focus to make sure that it happened. And I really do give a lot of credit to Bob and his staff for stepping up and, and the inspectors too, for stepping up and making it happen.
Jim, I'd like to just say, yes, I agree with all of that and, and Bob's done a great job and his staff in making some changes. And since we're throwing around compliments, I'd like to also compliment Jim Williamson and the Internal Audit Group who conducted the audit and just to allow other departments to recognize, those internal audits are not always bad and we see some positive things come out of it and I think we'll continue to see that in the future.
He's not my best friend, but he is a friend.
That's kind of comments us accountants you'd normally give.
You know, Jim, I was going to wait until the end to say this, but I, I really want to thank you and all of your staff. Just from a personal standpoint, you've been so helpful to so many of my constituents that have had an issue and, you know, they are so pleased with the results that they've been able to get and just the, the interface has been excellent, the professionalism has been great and I really see a difference in this last year than we've had in a couple of years past, so it's, you're really to be complimented for that.
And oftentimes, the answer's no. They, they do have to go out and reject work, they have public safety requirements for our public, which they, you know, we, we have responsibilities to, to make sure that the, the, the construction is, is safe. And sometimes the answer's no, but, but they, they're doing it in a very much of a professional and timely manner.
And our, just as a side note, our LFR measure will change beginning July one from the eight, two days, eighty percent of the time to one day, ninety percent of the time. So we're tracking in the eighties right now as, so we're, we're hopeful that we can make that.
I'd like to say good work too, because I used to measure your efficiency, your department's efficiency by the number of phone calls I got from developers and builders. And it's, it's gone to zero. Congratulations on that, I think.
So this would probably be a good time to end my presentation, right?
Ask for more money.
The next slide, this is just showing you that our actual, while we're doing that with our inspections, are actually up nine percent to this point through the year. So we're, we're doing this with more inspections than, you know, than we've had in the past. The next slide, this is when we, when we had the audit, part of it was to, to survey our peer cities to see how they were doing. And something that we found out through that is for commercial plan reviews, when you submit a plan, to get your first review, we do it in six days. The average peer city time is sixteen days, which is over three weeks. And so not only were inspectors doing a good job, our plan review people are doing a really good job as well. And then the next slide is, this is for residential. We do a residential review in two days where the peer city average is over nine days. And so, you know, when you put all three of those things together, you know, if, if you do it all right, you can get a permit and inspections pretty quickly with us right now. And I just want, this next slide just kind of shows inspection, the number of permits issued up, is up over sixteen percent through. So not only are we doing a good job there, we're doing more inspections. A lot of these are storm shelter permits, but it shows that we have a good trend going here. Their staff's really working hard. Now, I'd like to talk about animal welfare. They have over nine thousand visitors a year to the shelter. We, we actually respond to over twenty-five thousand service calls a year. We have sixteen field officers, so that's six-hundred-and-twenty square miles, sixteen guys. And then we care for over twenty-seven thousand animals in the shelter. We really couldn't do this without our partners. We partner with PetSmart Charities, with the ASPCA, with OK Humane, and we have over a hundred foster care and volunteer groups that we work with to transfer animals out as soon as we can. And one thing I want to note here, and you may remember it earlier, probably a month ago, we ran a Rachel Ray Challenge Request so we could enter this program. Since we're considered an alumni of ASPCA, we're eligible for this and it's a nationwide program where they offer up to a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand dollars in grants to shelters if they, we'll, we'll compete nationally really. But the goal is to increase our live, our, our lives saved for June, July and August by thirty percent over, thirty-five percent over last year. And so we, it really started Sunday, but we're going to actually do an official kickoff on Saturday. And if nothing else comes of this, we're hoping to get out in the community and make people aware of the problems that we have, the need for spade and neuter. And so you'll probably be seeing, hearing radio ads, we're doing a lot of things to try to increase that live exit rate. This next slide shows, the good thing here is it shows a trend. Back in July of oh-seven, we had a live exit rate of twenty-five percent in the shelter. So that kind of gives you an idea of how many animals we're having to euthanize. But there's been a steady progression here, you know, currently, well, since January of this year, we've been over seventy percent through the first four months of the year and in February, we hit seventy-four percent with our live exit rate. I do need to point out the September number there at forty-five percent. We had an outbreak of panleucopenia, which is a respiratory problem for cats in the shelter. And we, I mean, once it gets in your shelter, I mean, there's really no way to treat it. I mean, you just have to euthanize the, the animals. And it's really hard on our shelter workers and our, you know, the, all the animal welfare guys to have to, have to euthanize more animals than we are able to adopt out. And, but the good news is that since January, we've been back above seventy percent. You know, that's just an indication that our shelter takes, you know, the, the You know, that's just an indication that our shelter takes, you know, the animals that are sick and injured and mistreated, and, you know, we really don't get the cream of the crop there. So we're...they're working hard with what we get. There are times when we have those kind of outbreaks. But before I leave that slide, I want to say there are a couple of things that I need to talk about. We think part of the reason that we're able to get up over 70% are direct results of what council's done for us. A few years ago, you approved the community pet spade and neuter program, which allows us to take half of the adoption rate and put into a special purpose fund, and we can do free spade and neuter for citizens of Oklahoma City. So that's increased our number of spade and neuters by 3,000 a year, which has really helped us. The more animals you have in the community that are spade and neuter, the fewer you get in the shelter. And you also recently did the transfer to foster program, which allows us to take kittens and puppies, send them directly to a transfer or a foster, and keep them out of the shelter. And if we keep them out of the shelter, they're more likely to survive. And so the way it was working before we amended that ordinance, they'd come in, we'd send them out, they'd have to come back, and then we'd send them out. Anytime they're in the shelter, they're at risk, you know, they're susceptible because of the stress and the other animals in there. So we thank you for those two ordinances, but we think that they're a direct reflection of how good we're doing right now.
Bob, are we taking in fewer animals across the border, or are we increasing those numbers? Are we seeing more entries on an annual basis?
It's pretty steady.
Pretty steady, because, I mean, that would also impact, if we're taking in fewer animals, our live exit rate might naturally be higher.
I think the, you know, thinking back of my presentations, we're right around 27,000, 28,000. But we are moving more out alive, and that's where we want to be.
Great, that's our goal.
And eventually, the spade and neuter, if we get more spade neutered in the community, then that number that we take in will decline.
Thank you.
Then I'd like to talk about the Development Center. I'm sorry, I already talked about the Development Center. Subdivision and zoning, this is the last...this is the smallest division in the department. They do over 500 zoning applications. They basically provide support to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. And then every Tuesday, when you see a zoning application, they're the staff that prepares that reports, those reports for you. They really are kind of on the front line of new developments. They see them either have to rezone them, or address them, or do a deed approval for them. I'd note that we do over 3,200 addresses a year, and that's really important to get an accurate address, because for the permitting, for deliveries and for 911 responses, if you don't have an accurate address, then that can delay our response time. So next slide is our really major budget change, and it was our vacant abandoned building program. We had 11 positions proposed in this budget. Right now, based on what happened at the state, the Protected Property Rights Act, we're evaluating that, how that impacts our ordinance.
Right now, we really don't know where we're at. Legislation passed, I think there was a meeting this week with legal and planning and Development Services and folks from my office to sit down and talk about what we can do and what we cannot do. One of the things that I think we're challenged on is that the...our plan was based on the ability to have a registration fee, which was paying for a lot of these folks that come in. And whether we're going to be able to do that, whether it'll be a reduced program, I just think it's too early to tell. So we'd like to leave it in the budget as it is, and then come back and present to you a modified game plan on this, or not, depending upon what we can and cannot do with legislation. And once we've had further evaluation of exactly what we can or cannot do, bring back some options to council.
The revenue for these positions was just from the registry? Was it also from additional citations, or just from the registry?
Well, actually, it was mostly from the registration, and then there was some general fund subsidy that went into it too. I don't remember exactly what the split was, Doug. Was there also some...
500,000 from the registry and 200,000 from the general fund.
Come up and set that microphone, would you please?
Yeah. The revenue from the registry was about half a million dollars, and then another 200 and some thousand dollars from the general fund was the split there.
Would you expect some revenue from increased citations, or...
We didn't build that in because we didn't know how effective this would be in terms of getting folks to take care of the things themselves. And if they take care of it, there would be no additional revenue from, you know, the dilapidated or high weeds or those sorts of things.
So because it wasn't guaranteed, we did not plug it in, but there's potential for that. We just don't know.
Here's the budget summary. The budget's proposed for just over $18 million. This is about...this is a 4.5% increase from last year. That's kind of how it's divided by the different divisions. Then my last slide is just kind of a service analysis of what we need to do. We've looked at it. We want to continue to improve our services for Development Center. We're also doing...want to complete the transition on code enforcement. We think that'll make...once we get them out in the field with the proper equipment, it should improve our efficiencies. One thing there that I want to mention is that we're working with the Action Center. A lot of times, people will...they'll submit a complaint, and then we'll respond, no violation. What we're going to try to do is expand our ability to respond and give the public more information on that response. Instead of just saying no violation, we might say, "Grass wasn't 12 inches," or...we're going to try to do it where, you know, the citizen will have a little better idea why we went out, you know, confirm that we went out there, and then why, you know, what the result was. So we're working on that with PIO and IT. We also want to continue to improve our live release rate. I've talked about that. And then our animal control response times. We just now have got...kind of worked out how to track our responses for our field officers with IT. We're testing those numbers. What we plan to do is to do a survey of our peer cities to see what a reasonable response time is, you know, what a reasonable priority one call is. You know, like I said earlier, we only have 16 field officers, and we have to be...we don't want to set a goal that's unrealistic. And so that's something that we'll be looking at, and we're currently testing with IT to just see where we're at, and then we'll develop what an appropriate response time is. That's all I've got. Any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Your honor, I just got a couple of quick questions. Bob, on the PUDs, the Planning Commission approves versus the Council, a lot of times there are certain strains, a technical evaluation, fire fencing, fire landscaping, a little different from our normal requirement. Do we have any planned inspections? Make sure that they adhere to the requirement.
The building inspectors in Development Center will check those for compliance. When they come in for the building permit, those have to be shown on the plans, and then they...we check it that way. And if we get a complaint, we would send a code officer out.
But there is a process to routinely inspect them?
Yes.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. There's a plan to make sure that it isn't conformance at the time of occupancy permit.
Right.
And then beyond that, it's basically based upon complaints after that. Is that right, Bob?
Right.
But there is a...we do have at least one formal inspection.
Absolutely. At the time of the occupancy, we make sure that all provisions of the PUD are in conformance.
How long does a PUD last?
It's like zoning.
We've got a few that have never developed, and it would be helpful if they had a kind of a lifespan. They could die, and we could go back to revert to what that was before.
Well, and that would be a question maybe for Cindy, but in the past, at one time, we had a provision in there that if they didn't develop within five years, then they would revert back to the original zoning. But we've been advised that that's really not legal, because this is a zoning, and it should go with the land.
Most of my suggestions are illegal.
Now, we do have some PUDs that have that provision in them from when the ordinance was like that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to commend Development Services. You all are doing a great job. So I just want to say hats off. One thing that I would love to see in the future is to see a staff person dedicated to checking special permits, because, you know, we give special permits quite often, but sometimes, once we make sure that originally...once we make sure they conform to the original deal, then after that, there's no follow-up to make sure that they are still in compliance with their special permit. Because as you know, that I had a unique situation in Ward 7, where I had an entity to go approximately 10 years not being in compliance of their special permit. So I think it'd be very beneficial, maybe next budget cycle, that we may add a staff member who, their sole responsibility is to check special permits, to make sure individuals and organizations and entities are following those special permits.
We'll look into that.
Bob, I really appreciate the conversation about feedback to citizens when they make a complaint as to what the resolution was or why we didn't respond. I've seen some programs that are a little bit more user-friendly on the front side for citizens to be able to file a concern online. You know, there are different applications. I think the city manager and I talked about one of those.
And we are looking at some things along those lines, is to get an application, iPhone app?
Yeah, some kind of an app where, I mean, it is...it's not complicated, but, you know, sometimes calling into the Action Center is a little bit more difficult. If we could set up a system where, you know, I could say, "Pothole on such and such street" or whatever, it might be a little quicker to get into the system. But the feedback is going to be equally or maybe more important, so folks understand that we've looked, and that was our resolve.
We've known for a while that we need to move our code enforcement guys more into the 90s, because, you know, when you go out with a clipboard and a piece of paper, that's not really the way we need to do it. And we're working on that. IT's working with us.
With regard to the...that we're going to look into the vacant abandoned buildings ordinance, one of the things that I gathered in trying to talk to legislators and people in the real estate business about why we wanted to do it, their pushback always was, "Well, you've already got the laws in place to do it, you just don't enforce the laws you have." That was the standard pushback. I'd like to see as part of our analysis to determine what we do have, what is in place, and are we really supporting it? Because, you know, maybe the best thing we could do is, you know, they install them in that briar patch. I mean, if in fact we do have ways to enforce it that we're not doing, we ought to just ramp it up. I mean, because the whole vacant abandoned buildings ordinance got lost in some kind of argument about property rights of the property owner, the person that was letting the property deteriorate and thereby creating a problem for other people. We...I think if we, in our analysis, we ought to be looking at whether or not we do have sufficient or not even, perhaps not sufficient. If we thought we had sufficient ordinances, we wouldn't have put forward this one. But maybe we could do more in the area of ordinances or around the books.
One of the things we talked about, and that was brought out in the vacant and abandoned study that was done, was the lack of incentive to do anything with the property. Our taxes are so low.
Right.
And as long as, you know, you keep it secure, there's no incentive out there. And so we were trying to help incentivize that a little bit to make people go. So what we were trying to do was to take a little bit beyond our existing ordinances.
But Jim, I think one thing we haven't done is, I think we have the ability to write continuing citations and assess additional fines on a routine basis. I think we can do that. We just...I think there was sort of a policy maybe to not do that. And so to follow with Pete, I think we ought to look at what's in our arsenal and be a little more, be significantly more aggressive.
No, I don't think for a minute that what we did wasn't appropriate, so don't misunderstand or stand me out. But if we...dealing with the legislature, whether it's appropriate or right or not appears to be lost on that group. I mean, I think if there's a way that we can ramp up what we do, what we do have the right to do, then we ought to do it. I mean, we didn't even...I think it'd be interesting to look at when we do that, because we've got a legislative committee meeting coming up. I'd like to know, in that meeting, how the legislators that represent all or part of the city of Oklahoma City voted on that ordinance. My feeling is we're going to be very disappointed when we get that list. You know, it may be that our better use of the funding for...that we do to hire lobbyists and to try to lobby the legislature might be just put it into campaign funds and try to beat some of these people. I mean, this has just got to the point where if Oklahoma City proposes it, it's going to have a...it's going to be pushed...there's going to be pushback against it, period. End of conversation. If we propose it, it's bad. Now, if that comes from somebody like the speaker who has Kent Lake in his district, that's understandable. I don't think he's right about that, but I think it's understandable he might come to that conclusion. But if a guy represents Northwest Oklahoma City or Southwest Oklahoma City and votes against these kind of ordinances, there's something wrong. His elevator's not working. I mean, we need to...if we have a way that we can enforce what's there better, I'm all in favor of doing whatever we can to throw it at them. And if that's what they want, then there may be some more onerous things that we've chosen not to do that we can do.
In light of what's occurred, I'd just like to make a suggestion. Having attended the seminar up in Cambridge several months ago, the whole question of, if you want to call it vacant and abandoned buildings, we were kind of changed that to just abandoned buildings to try to modify it, but whatever you want to call it, is a very complex issue, and it requires a number of solutions, of which the registry was just the first step. I'd suggest possibly, if the council's interested, I think it'd be a good idea to schedule a workshop where the council was briefed, as we were briefed during that seminar, on all the nuances that are involved in this whole area. Because this is not just an Oklahoma City problem, it's a national problem, and it requires not only commitment, but it requires a significant amount of dollars to carry this off. So my suggestion would be to consider, if the council's interested, a workshop on this topic, so that we can be brought up to speed.
One other question. On subdivision and zoning, we put that in the Development Department how many years ago?
It was...it's been in the Planning Department, and then in '93, when...well, no, not '93, 2009. Planning Department was created in '93. That's when it was put in Planning. And then in 2009, when the Development Services Department was created, it was moved to Development Services.
Would you, if we compared to peer cities, would most cities have subdivision and zoning under the Planning Department, or would this be a mixed bag, or...
It's really kind of all over the place. I haven't done a survey. We work closely with the Planning Department for conformance issues on the reports.
So over these five years, what would you say the advantages and disadvantages of this framework are, of having it like this or having it under the Planning Department?
Well, one key thing that's important about this is the...everything that we do related to the zoning ordinance, not everything, but a lot of things require ordinance interpretation, and it's important...that's the area that I came up with in, and it's important to get accurate interpretations when there's a question about, you know, can a school go here, or does it have to be zoned, those types of things. And that's...that kind of probably is the reason it was kept in Development Services, because of the zoning interpretations and, you know, the interaction with the Planning Commission, those types of things.
The short-term planning is clearly touched by both the Planning Department and Development Services. And if you ask Bob, he's going to tell you that it's better served in Development Services. If you ask Aubrey, she'd probably tell you it's better served in the Planning Department. I would guess those answers. We set this up intentionally in, whenever it was, '08 or '09, basically as more of a one-stop center for the developer. So it was put together from the development community standpoint. Doesn't mean that was necessarily the right way, but that was at least the rationale that was used when we put it together back then. We can look at that again and see if it's still, you know, six years into it now, is that still the best way to go? And so we'd be happy to do that, but I think Bob's right. I think, you know, we had consultants that came in and helped us come up with that option. Not that consultants are always the best answer, but on this and set up this structure. And it, you know, it appears to be working, but maybe we can do it better.
Really, because they work directly with our permit section as well as our code enforcement, so those relationships would have to exist wherever it was.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So we'll adjourn, adjourn the Finance Committee and reconvene as the council meeting. The consent document will look for a resolution setting a public hearing date of June 10th for the proposed annual budget.
And I'd ask Doug to highlight the changes. We presented a, a budget to you a couple of months ago and have made a few changes to it, so we'd like to at least highlight those changes to you before we adopt the preliminary today and, and go ahead and set up a hearing for next week.
Great.
So yeah, so the budget book that you received six weeks ago or so, we have a few changes that we've made to, to the numbers that were in there. On the revenue side, we have two changes. One is to the sales and use tax estimates. We took into account the, the higher than expected revenues for May and so increased our revenue estimates for not just the general fund, but all of the funds that receive sales and use tax proportionally have all been bumped up just a little bit to, to reflect that higher than expected revenue. The other revenue change that we have is related to the contract with the school district for providing police officers for security at Oklahoma City Public Schools. There's been an increase in the number of police officers that they'd like to have providing security at the schools and so we'll be getting an additional $200,000 and $18,000 from the school district. So those two increases in revenue for the general fund add up to about $1.1 million. So our general fund budget goes from what we had in the budget book of $413.9 million to just over $415 million would be the proposed general fund budget that's in there. On the expenditure side, we've got the increase in police officers associated with that school district contract, that's seven additional officers. And then we've added an additional five officers, which brings our total number of positions in the police department, the number of additions in the police department to 40 additional positions in the police department. We've also made a change in the way we've handled some of our reserves. We've taken about a million dollars out of some of the reserves that we have in the general fund. And that coupled with the extra sales tax revenue and use tax revenue has allowed us to place a million, $350,000 as a transfer to COTPA for additional transit service. And there's a city manager report as well that recommends the enhancements, that the city manager recommends with that money in COTPA. It's for a pilot program for evening service on two routes and then to enhance the frequency on two other routes during the daytime and so.
And we're not asking for a vote on that today as far as there's that's on the agenda to vote. And we can have a, a future discussion on, on what that would be. That's just, that was first of all Jason's recommendations on it. And I think it's, it's what we heard, we're trying to, what we think we heard from the council, but we'd like to have a future discussion on that in a little more detail. But rest assured that I, that I think we've heard what the council said, we would like more resources if available into, into police and into transit. And I, hopefully we've responded the best we can.
I, I really appreciate the opportunity to look at night service. I think it's the next step in moving transit forward to a little bit more efficient and more user-friendly service. And if we can test it out, I mean, I think, you know, we've seen over the last couple of years that each time we've had an opportunity to test something that was enhanced, we have enhanced ridership and that would be the long-term goal. So I really appreciate focusing on those two things.
The, the resolution that you have before you today sets a public hearing for next week. It's really more of a formality to follow state law. We've obviously been having opportunities for the public to come and, and address the councils they have before on transit issues and other things throughout the process, but this does the legal, formal introduction and sets the hearing for next Tuesday, when we'll have the actual vote on the budget.
And just, just for clarification, the, the budgeting for the increased police officers, we wouldn't be able to actually train them in this fiscal year?
Not all of them.
Not all, so some of the money would go for overtime programs?
I mean, the. Well, the, well, the chief would like to, to utilize, he will utilize that to whatever focus area. Some of that has been, you know, overtime in the past where he's done, really made a difference on, on drive-by shootings in, in some areas, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
The, the general fund budgeted reserve being reduced by about a million dollars, what percentage is that? What is that?
Our contingency budget, kind of our, our budget is right at 2%, which fits with our financial policies of trying to maintain a 2% reserve.
2% of the total budget?
Total budget, right.
Ed, I'd like for this to be moved forward, but I would like to make one quick comment and, and when Jason made the presentation on COTPA, I believe, you know, a, a concern was raised that students at Oklahoma City Community College are unable to take classes in the evening. And I don't know if it would create too much additional costs because I think the bus service currently runs till 7:00 and they're just asking if, if another route, I mean, another line could be added at least till 8:30 to provide for students who do take the night classes, which usually run from like, oh, I'm sorry, Jason's right here, 5:30 to 8:00. And if there is a one final line that would run after 8 o'clock, you know, again, what we're talking about is night service going till midnight along possibly 23rd and 29th Street. And the question becomes what's more important, you know, this type of transportation that's required for a job or transportation that leads to, you know, higher education, hopefully better employment opportunities? I'm just throwing that out there not to let it be forgotten, so, thank you.
I don't know if we want to do this now or under city manager reports. There are two lines, I think 12 and 13, that go to OCCC?
That is correct. Yes, and during the day, I believe between those two lines, we have, I think it's potentially 15 minutes, 15-minute service, no more than 30-minute frequency currently at the junior college, or at the OCCC.
And how, how late does it run?
Well, I think most lines run until 7:00, Jason?
7:00 to 7:30.
And, and so I'm just suggesting that we look, and maybe it's, it's a matter of keeping the same number of, of, what do we call it, routes going out there, but just extend the last one until, say, 8:30 to provide for students who would like to take a night class.
Right, so keeping the same number of buses. Yeah. Potentially running a little bit longer and, you know, we, we work and have dialogue with OCCC. We could, you know, check and see how long that bus needed to stay out and, and provide some additional information on what it would take to do that if that's.
Correct, yeah, and I'm just suggesting that whatever you decide and the college says would be appropriate, I'm all for it, but.
David, maybe they would consider being our partner in helping us do that. I mean, if we can identify what the cost is, we've done that before and maybe OCCC would help us pay for that extra hour of service on those two routes.
I just.
I'm not committing into it either, but I'm asking, I mean, these public-private partnerships are what we're using to do lots of other things, so maybe they could take a look at it.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll put the numbers together, we'll see where our starting point is.
23 and 11 are, I mean, they don't go to the, the idea is to have them ping back and forth, east and west. Would you, would you staff the Transit Center if you did those evening services?
No, with just two routes out, we would recommend not staffing the Transit Center just for the two. Now, keep in mind, Route 23 does not currently go to the Transit Center, Route 11 does. So as it's designed now, there would just be the one, one route at the Transit Center. So I don't know that we would really require staffing. Now, as we get further along into it, our goal is to maximize ridership, make this Route 23 and 11 as beneficial as we possibly can to our riders, try to work in connections to the downtown discovery. So, you know, there may be some opportunities to take 23 into the Transit Center after hours. Those are just some things that we're looking at. But even if that were to be the case, we're really only looking at, at two routes and I don't feel like we really need it open and staffed for, for that at this point.
How, how late is the Transit Center staffed now?
Yeah, we close the doors right around 6:50, I believe.
So if you tried to do something that David's talking about on 12 and 13 that go to the Transit Center, would you have to staff that till?
Uh, we would probably look at trying to keep it open a little bit longer, just depending on when that bus returns at the end of the line. And those are just, I mean, we would certainly look at it and determine whether or not we needed to have extra staff there.
Okay.
So it's a possibility.
Thank you. Any other questions on the budget? Do we have a second? David? Larry?
A couple of things. Congratulations to Musgrave Pennington on a great neighborhood meeting last night. Appreciate Bob Scowler coming out and talking about public safety to the folks. And then we did have a little hiccup on moving forward on the vacant abandoned buildings with respect to the legislature, but Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, did not the legislature approve the ability to set up a Central Oklahoma Transit Authority in the future? It didn't, and that is a great positive step forward and the first step in, in moving to a greater transportation system is what we, you guys were talking about just a few minutes ago. That's not going to solve the problem, but we do now have a mechanism where an area-wide transportation authority can be established thanks to the legislature. So everything they do is not bad, Pete.
Okay. So move to city manager reports?
Oh, we did highlight, I think, most of the things in, in the embark enhancements and the changes to the revenue. We did have some follow, follow previous meetings on some council questions. Some of those were just, we're going to have a presentation coming forth in the next couple of weeks to answer some of those questions in more detail.
Okay. Francis, do we have citizens to be heard? Okay, then we're adjourned.